I want to call tonight's meeting to order for the City of Columbia Heights City Council for Monday, August 24th, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please, Nicole Teal?
Councilmember Biskin.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen.
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki.
Here.
And Mayor Schmidt.
Here. If you are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. The next item is approval of the agenda, and I do want to add one item under number five, Proclamations, Presentations, Recognizations, Announcement. Yes, we're going to add a letter B. The Councilmember Mershen is going to talk about the flag ceremony hosted by the VFW. So if there are any other corrections or additions, if not, then can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
No move?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. And then this next item is the Proclamations and Recognizations. First item is a recognition of Census Complete Count Committee. They have been done for quite a while. They've been kind of waiting for COVID to end and restrictions to do this, but it's getting late. So as the census is going to be done at the end of September, so this needs to be done as a thank you for all of the workers that helped with this. So Katie Jacobs, could you please?
Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'd like to acknowledge the following individuals that have committed themselves to the success of the complete count of the 2020 census for Columbia Heights. Each will receive a certificate of appreciation that has been signed by you, Mayor, and the city manager and myself. So they'll all be receiving one of these. And what it says is for your contribution and volunteerism, raising awareness and engagement, ensuring the complete count of Columbia Heights residents in the 2020 census. The following people will be the recipients: Sue Betzhold, Larry Betzhold, Martha Grave, Veronica Johnson, Janet Kendall, Angela Copas, Jessica Oldham, Jane Polly, Tammy Schmitz, and Stephanie Small. They were the instruments of success for our community, and I cannot thank them enough for their contributions. I'd also like to take another moment to make a presentation to the council and the city on our appreciation from the committee to all of you for the support and your efforts, especially in understanding the need to pass the resolution that gives the census workers the same and equal access to candidates and their campaigns to multi-unit developments in order to promote the importance and participation of each tenure census. We did in Columbia Heights what our state legislature could not do, and I think it's a really important step, and it's through your efforts that we were able to get that to happen. Thank you for all your important action on behalf of the residents of our community, because everybody needs to be counted. So what I'd like to do is present to the council and the city with this framed, I hope I have it right side up, this framed poster, which was a commemorative poster, signed by the artist, and then each of the committee members have also signed it, and underneath is the task team that they worked specifically on. So if you want me to bring that up there or do you want me to set it to the side?
I have seen it.
You have seen it?
Yes, I actually have one.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate all the work that the team did. I know you got cooperation from local restaurants for providing food, too, because there's one thing that a committee, volunteer committee, does well is when they actually get fed. It's nice to have the support of the restaurants, too, that came out and provided that. Does anybody else have any comments?
Uh-uh.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is the flag ceremony. This is an annual event put on by the VFW and the Fire Department. So, Councilmember Mershen.
Yep. September 12th at 10:00 a.m. at the VFW on 4446 Central Avenue, we'll be having our flag retirement ceremony, where anybody who has an old flag that's all beat up and wants to bring it in will take it in and take care of it for you. That's September 12th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
And that's just in the parking lot, then?
Yep, it'd be in the upper parking lot of the VFW.
I got a chance to eat there the other night, and I was so pleased. Actually, one of the first times I parked in the parking lot, and it was actually had lines in it. It's so nice to see that, all the upgrades that you guys did over the shutdown, and appreciate that. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Fire Department, for doing this, working with them every year. It's fun to see. It's interesting to watch, and it is a ceremony. It's not, it is respectful, and we appreciate that.
It's our Columbia Heights Fire Department Honor Guard that'll be up there Saturday during the flag retirement.
All right. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be removed for discussion? If not, city manager Kelly Bouchard will go ahead and read through them.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Item A is approval of the meeting minutes, the city council meeting of August 10th and the special city council meeting of August 14th. Item B is approval of Resolution 2020-60. That's accepting election-specific CARES Act grant funding in the amount of $10,783.90 for Anoka County. Item C is approval of the purchase of the Swiga cable equipment and service that we discussed at the work session. That totals $55,145. Item D is consideration of the attached list of rental housing applications. Item E is approval of the business license applications, also in your packet. And item D is, I'm sorry, F, however, F is a review of the bills totaling $1,501,271.72.
If there are no questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
No move?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearings, consideration of revocation of the license to operate a rental unit within the City of Columbia Heights is requested against the rental property at 979 44 and 1/2 Avenue Northeast for failure to meet the requirements of the Residential Maintenance Code. And who's going to be speaking? I can't see. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the first one we have this evening is, you said it was 9:40? Or, sorry, 979?
979 44 and 1/2.
So basically, just a failure to correct the outstanding violations, which I think are listed there in the findings of fact on the property. Several exterior property maintenance issues that were not corrected over the past, well, since May 20th, so.
Do any of the council members have any questions regarding this?
Uh-uh.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anybody from the audience here to speak regarding this property of 979 44 and 1/2 Avenue Northeast? Anybody? All right. Then can I get a motion to close the public hearing and waive the reading, please?
Move to close the public hearing and to waive the reading of Resolution numbers 2020-61. There'd be ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then a move to adopt resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-61, being a resolution of the City Council of the City of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code, Chapter 5A, Article 4, Section 5A, dot 408A of a rental license listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then you got another one. Consideration of revocation of the license to operate a rental unit within the City of Columbia Heights is requested against the rental property at 1122 40th Avenue Northeast for failure to meet the requirements of the Residential Maintenance Code.
Almost identical scenario to the prior one, basically. Exterior violations that were not corrected since going on since the beginning of maintenance.
Do any of the council members have questions regarding this property?
No.
Okay. And this is a public hearing again. Is there anybody here to speak out on property 1122 40th Avenue Northeast? Anybody? Then can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing and waive the reading of Resolution numbers 2020-62, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then I need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-62, being a resolution of the City Council of the City of Columbia Heights approving revocation pursuant to City Code, Chapter 5A, Article 4, Section 5A, point 408A of the rental license listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dan. Items for consideration, other ordinances and resolutions, Columbia Heights Business Relief Program. All right. Bitch, welcome back.
Yeah, it's good to be back.
See ya.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. As many of you know, earlier this year, the federal government established the CARES Act, which trickled down federal funding to the city and a lot of the small businesses. More specifically, the city actually just approved today the use of municipal CARES Act funding, and the purpose of this funding was to assist the cities with COVID-related costs, anything from increased wages, overtime with police, masks, anything in the workplace. As a city, we deemed it necessary to utilize any remainder funding from this funding to establish a business relief grant program, which is in line with the requirements from the federal government and the other entities handling the administration of the CARES Act. Just in general, this is a $10,000 grant program. We aren't quite sure how much funding we will be getting at the end of all the expenditures with the city, but we will be using this for $10,000 grant amounts to all different businesses that can either provide costs that they have incurred due to the shutdowns, stay-at-home orders and stuff like that, or even costs like the city that they had to for purchasing masks for their workers' rent and stuff like that. And that also goes into the losses that they have occurred due to these shutdowns and everything. Generally, or the item in front of you is just a general guideline. These guidelines are essential to establishing the program and to guide the conversation. It is necessary for the city to enter an agreement with a third-party vendor to administer this grant or parts of this grant, since we do not have the staffing capacity right now to cover things like financials or other things like that. So we will be working with a nonprofit entity to review the financials of the businesses when they apply for the grant. We initially started the conversation with the third-party vendor with Northeast Bank. Unfortunately, they do not have the staffing at this time, but they're willing to help us as we move forward. They actually got us in contact with the Central Minnesota Development Company, and we are working with both Northeast and the CMDC to negotiate terms on how exactly we will be sharing the administration of the grant program. These guidelines are essential for them to kind of set how they will be assisting us and what we will be looking for. As you've noticed, I handed out some brief changes. I will go over those real quick. In a lengthy conversation this morning with CMDC, they had recommended some of these changes. They usually administer the small business loan program before COVID. They've also administered the Minnesota Deed Program. They are administering Anoka County's program and a lot of other programs coming through this CARES Act funding. It was their recommendation at first, I believe it's the third bullet point, to remove the restriction as of January 1st, 2020. They brought to our attention that in past grant programs, by setting that deadline, they reduce the amount of applicants. The requirement is that they be in good standing with the Secretary of State at that time. Well, due to COVID and other expansions of deadlines, a lot of businesses weren't actually forced to submit their taxes and everything at that point. So even though they were going to be in standing, the paperwork wasn't processed, and so a lot of businesses missed out on those grant programs. And by eliminating that, we just make sure that they're in good standing by the time they are applying for the grant or by the time they actually receive the grant funding. The next one is changing the January 1st, 2020 to quarter 4, 2019. This is because when a business, every quarter a business has to submit a tax document that says this is how many employees we have. Rather than setting the deadline for January 1st, CMDC recommended that we set it for a quarter. That way, they know exactly what document that they're submitting and what information that we'll be receiving. Two more bullet points down. So we built our grant program to mirror the Anoka County's initial grant program. Ours is still very similar, but there have been some changes made. By eliminating the disclosure of other grants that this business has received, we kind of take the burden of all the paperwork off the business. This was recommended by CMDC because they're starting to see that the more complicated these grant programs are, the less likely businesses are going to apply in such a short application window. This just eliminates us from tracking what other grant programs they have applied for or are currently in applications for, which could be a wide variety from federal, state, and local, other grant programs. They still are going to certify that, you know, they're not in violation of any of the laws and everything like that, and that's part of the future agreement with the business. But this kind of takes the burden of us tracking who they're applying for and them tracking what they've applied for at the same time. That feeds into the last piece that we changed, which is the second bullet point under ineligible businesses. Originally, the Anoka County Grant Program Limited, if you got funding from a city or if you got funding from the county, you're only able to utilize one grant program. They have since then eliminated this. We thought that by eliminating this as well, we would allow businesses to utilize the maximum of funding from both programs. And then that also ties into the previous conversation of them having to continually report what different grants and everything that they're applying for. Just above that, it establishes that if they have received federal dollars or county dollars or any other grant programs, that they're not using the funds that they receive from our program on the exact same expenditures. So they will not be getting money just to get money. They will have to prove that line item, these are the expenditures we're using it on and everything like that with all the programs. But this kind of eliminates them from not being able to, say they have $20,000 in expenditures, use $10,000 from us and $10,000 from the county to cover those expenditures. So as I stated, we are currently still in negotiations with CMDC to kind of figure out what aspects of the grant they're going to assist us in administering. The majority of the burden will be on city staff, but the financials and the financial review that we cannot handle will be handled by them. The next steps for this program, we will continue working with them to create an application and finalize our negotiations in an agreement. That agreement will have to be brought to the city council for your approval, and you guys should see that hopefully at the next meeting, now that we have the, or we will have some guidelines to the grant. And then, once that agreement is approved, we can begin the application period and start walking out and talking to these businesses, and we can start entering into those agreements with the businesses to get them the money if they are approved through the application process. The purpose of us bringing this forward is, of course, for you guys to ask any questions or anything with clarifications and then approval, so we can bring this to our third-party vendor.
Could you give me the name of the vendor?
Yep.
Central Minnesota Business?
Development Company.
Development Company.
Yep.
And where are they located?
I believe it was Andover?
Andover.
Yep, Andover.
And I just wanted to clarify for those who may be listening and interested in this, the grant is up to $10,000, so it could be less.
Could be less, depending on the expenditures.
Correct. Councilmember Biskin.
Do you have an idea when it's going to start, when you'll be able to get the information out to businesses?
Well, hopefully, early September would be the timeline for us to start the application process.
Okay. The window for applications will be a couple of weeks. And I suppose if we have to have it done by the end, by what, November 1st?
Yep. Since we're on such a shortened timeline, it'll actually be about a 10-day application period. That's what other cities and counties are doing. And then if we don't receive enough applications to clear the funding in the first 10 days, we can revitalize or change the program, and then we are expected to open up for another 10 days if we don't complete the funding in the first round.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. And can I get a motion to waive the reading then, please?
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2020-63, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I forgot to say, I think this is a great program. I am encouraged because we need to encourage our businesses that have been struggling for the last few months, struggling with having to close down, struggling with only partial openings. I appreciate your team working on this and getting this discussed with different entities, and thanks to Northeast for giving us the name of the Central Minnesota Business Development Company then, too. Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-63, a resolution approving the creation and implementation of the Columbia Heights Business Relief Grant Program.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Item B is new business and reports, A, options for dropping off election ballots. This is just an informational item, correct?
Yep, just looking for some feedback as we move from the primary elections to the general election. Of course, we saw a lot of absentee voting with the primary election, and with that, more ballots being dropped off than we've ever seen. So just trying to think ahead and get some feedback on how we want to accept ballots for the general election. We are allowed to, so just background for the primary, all ballots that were dropped off in person were brought to city staff. We are allowed to do a drop box, and that would be, you know, more like as if you were dropping it in a mailbox, but, you know, inside and at location for us to handle. We aren't recommending doing a outside drop box just for security of ballots, but an inside drop box would certainly be an option. So I'm just looking for feedback. I've been asked a lot of questions from residents, and so just wanted to hear any feedback or thoughts from the council.
Anybody have any comments regarding this?
I think it'd be a great idea to have a drop-off box. And then the lobby makes a lot of sense. Is the library a safe place for a drop-off box, too, or not?
Yeah, we can have them at other locations. Just the thing would be just running around and making sure that all the ballots are, you know, grabbed in appropriate time.
That's true. So the fewer the better, but yet we still want it convenient for residents because a lot of people drop off their water bill, too, so if they can come in. What happens if there's a line? You know, if all of a sudden, you know, there's a rush, will there be, there is some kind of demarcation for folks to have, you know, how far apart they should stand?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can add some more. Right now, the location we're thinking is right by the community development door downstairs. So, I mean, we can add some additional floor markers in the lobby, especially as it gets, you know, closer.
And you'll have something on the website on the front page letting folks know?
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd only want it at City Hall if we did a drop box. I'd only want it at City Hall and not at the library. Library staff has enough to do, and they seem overworked as it is when they...
Yes. And we are that big of a city, and we have one clerk that would be running around picking up these ballots. It's asking a lot to have her do that. Councilmember Mershen, did you have any comments regarding this?
I agree with Nick. It should be at City Hall here. That way, we got more control over it. There's one person doing it. She's going from the entrance back up to the office here, and there's a lot of more control over the security of it and stuff. So that's all I have.
I do have some concerns with it. Every person that brings in a ballot for someone or for themselves, they're only allowed to drop off a limit of three ballots per election cycle. And if we are dropping them off in a drop box, we lose control. Yes, there's cameras. Yes, there could be staffs watching them, but we do lose control, and we lose something when we aren't doing that. And since they're coming to City Hall already to vote, we have a very good resource upstairs. Just take the elevator up or the stairs, however they are planning to do it, and you can drop it off right at, you can actually do early voting. You can, it seems to be working well. There's been, and the staff at the finance, are they willing to take ballots and let you know that they are coming in? Is that how they did it this last time?
Yeah, so primarily, last time, with the exception of Election Day, we had election staff up here in the council chambers that were accepting the ballots that would come in early. Election Day, I didn't have that staff, so it was mostly myself and got some help from downstairs as well, the finance staff. But yes, they can certainly help us accept those.
And you did say Anoka County isn't doing it, correct?
So, yes, what Anoka County is doing, they are having staff, basically have a table drop-off during their business hours where someone can bring it in and giving it directly to a staff person. And we can certainly do that as well.
Okay. I think that's been working well. I think if we did this at our new facility, this would work better. But right now, I'm not seeing where it is helpful to change something at this late in the stage in the game. I do have some concerns in this, so I am...
Are you saying you don't want a drop-off box? Or are you saying you want it in a different location?
I don't think this is going to work well here. We can't supervise the drop-off when they are dropping it off individually. We cannot verify that they are dropping it off just for three people. We can't verify that they aren't coming back. aren't coming back and dropping off multiple...
Did we have a rush when we had 2,800 mail-in ballots? Do we, how much do we have for people dropping off? What was the volume?
Um, that's a good question. I mean, probably on Election Day when I was handling it, I at least got 50 ballots, so that was, you know, probably, you know, 30 to 40 people in here. And then before, we had, you know, people coming in as well, so.
I still am supportive of a drop-off box. I mean, if you want to judge, one of the judges to babysit it, that's fine, but I think for the election with the numbers that they're expecting, for people to mail in or drop off, it makes it more convenient, especially if people are starting to worry about how the mail system is going right now. I have a mail lady that's just rushing by her house dropping stuff off because if she doesn't get to the end of her carrier, the people at the end of my street are not getting their mail on a consistent basis anymore. So I support having a drop-off box, and if you have somebody watching it, that's fine. If there's judges that are willing to donate or volunteer their time, but I, you know, it's going to be busy.
Yeah, just for clarification, either way, we, you know, we're going to take ballots for drop off, whether it be handing it off to someone or having a box. So, I mean, what I'm gathering is that, you know, yeah.
And if we're going to have somebody watch it, why even have the box? Why not just have them go to the staff, I guess?
Right.
How are other cities doing? I mean, is it, other cities having issues with people dropping off more than three ballots or not following the rules?
Yeah, so, you know, the guidance for, kind of what I've seen, there are, Anoka County's currently doing a survey of all the cities, so I haven't heard from everybody. A lot of people are kind of contemplating about what they want to do. Haven't heard too much about outside drop-off boxes. I think with, you know, inside, people are going either way, but I can see that, you know, if we're going to be having someone watch it, we might as well just have the staff, you know, take them. So if everyone is on board with that, we'll make some adjustments to how we're doing that to make it easier for everybody, and we'll still go through a staff.
This will be our last, hopefully our last election in this building.
Yes.
That is the plans, and I think it's going to work much better in the new building. I hate changing it at the last minute. I, I, I just, when you hear about things like Patterson, New Jersey, where over 3,000 ballots were thrown out because somebody was stuffing the ballot box, and the judge has ruled that that election is invalid, I don't, I don't expect it to happen here, but it has happened, and yes, it was another state, but it was a local election. It wasn't, it wasn't a presidential election, it was a local election for two council members, and they, they were both charged with illegal stuff happening, and I don't think either one is, I don't know if either one is going to be eligible to win in that election anymore. We'll see what happens, that's a good one to watch. But no, I am not in favor of a drop box. I think what we have in place is very good. You have a very good person that does come in and work, he knows what he's doing, and he's been doing it for a while, so he's very familiar with the process. And if he has to start earlier than just a couple of weeks before, I think that's going to be better.
Absolutely, well, yeah, we'll keep promoting.
Councilmember Williams, did you want to say anything too?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, yeah, so we'll keep promoting drop off of ballots in person is an option, so just so everyone knows, we can, once absentee voting starts on September 18th, we can accept in-person drop offs of ballots until Election Day at 3:00 PM, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess we were doing the administrative reports now, sorry. Next item is city council administrative reports. Anybody have anything from council, Councilmember Biskins?
I have a few things.
Okay.
One, I first want to thank, and I don't know if he's still here or not, Ben Sandell, our communication director for the Great Picture Slideshow, if you haven't checked it out yet on our website, it's really cool, they've got some old cool pictures on there, plus some current ones on there, and it's really nice, so I want to thank him for doing that work and setting that up. I volunteered again at the Blooming Sunshine Garden Lomaki Park. If you're interested in peppers and tomatoes, keep an eye on the Heights Next Facebook page, we'll be letting folks know when you can come and harvest some of that. I also attended the online Metro Council Housing and Economic Development Committee, and there were some interesting items that came up. One, for those of you who may not be aware, their estate is looking at a $4 billion deficit, apparently, because of COVID. That's something we'll need to keep in mind in the next two years when our budget comes up, it's going to be a tough couple of years. The other thing that I think my people might be interested in, they're going to start looking, this is to do with housing. How do we deal with large companies, and this should be familiar with folks in the city, buying houses in our cities and renting them? So they're going to start addressing that issue and see if there's ways that we can deal with that, because it's not just happening in Columbia Heights, it's happening all over the country, actually. How can we increase affordable housing units in the midst of the COVID deficit? We have right now the number that they want, that we need for affordable housing in the state of Minnesota now is 38,000. It's come down quite a bit in the last two years, but it's still 38,000 units are needed to help people with housing. Good news, they also talked about the homeless during this meeting, that the numbers for COVID have actually been quite low for the homeless, which was surprising, but they're very happy with that. Right now, Minnesota has 8,000 homeless people that they're aware of, and only 2,000 are unsheltered. The other 6,000, they've been managed to find at least temporary shelter for them. And I want to thank, this was in our green sheet, I want to thank all of you out there who turned in their batteries to our recycle center. They turned in 300 pounds of batteries to the recycle place that they carry it to, and it's a lot of batteries that we have kept out of the landfill, so I want to thank everyone for that. And also, if anyone hasn't noticed, today I drove by the business center, they have started the prep work they need to do before the demolition, it's pretty exciting, they got fencing all around, they got some cats in there digging things up, and they have to do some prep work before they can actually tear it down, but if you haven't had a chance to go look, it's pretty exciting. We won't have to look at that black crumbling wall anymore pretty soon. So that's it, thank you.
Nothing.
Councilmember Mershen? Councilmember Nowinski?
It was a pretty busy week. I was able to attend the Lions Club picnic that we held at Sullivan, and it was very well-attended. Happy to say that the Lions have nine or 10 new members in the last couple of months, so the club is still maintaining and growing. Made the Kiwanis meeting, and that one was good outside as well. Peach sales were good this year, sold out actually, and we'll be distributing them Thursday and Friday this week. And the Booster Meeting, which was actually held in-person or through Zoom, most were on Zoom, was also very good, and the new officers will be elected next meeting, so all the clubs, we're doing well, they're making the adjustments for the COVID, and everyone's moving forward pretty good.
Thank you very much. I did get an email saying congratulations again on the Sustainability Award from the League of Minnesota Cities. I know Councilmember Biskins mentioned it last time, but people are noticing, and I, thanks to Kiwanis, they're doing a great job, appreciate all their help in this, and our staff too. It's, couldn't do it without the team effort. I forgot to mention last time that, that our city manager, Kelly, and our chief of police, Lenny Austin, and myself met with a group that were concerned about our police force, and you hear a lot of bad things out there about defunding police and things like that, and how they're not supported, and I just wanted to say, I was concerned when they wanted to meet, but I was very pleased with their reactions to, Lenny just did a great job assuring them that we are doing training, that we are continuing to do training, and we will add training as needed, and it is very pleased with their reaction. They had one or two things, minor things, that they, he thought he should correct it, he said, absolutely, I will get onto it right away, and thanks, thank you for a discussion, thank you for coming forward and asking questions, and not just out there protesting like you see on the news, but thank you for coming forward, I appreciate this group, that they did that, and we're willing to talk, willing to have dialogue, and appreciate that very much. Also, was at the League of Minnesota Cities Zoom Conference Annual Budget Talks, they are not raising our dues, but our dues may raise because we are going from one number to the new number, so even though they're not raising the dues, we are passing that threshold of 20,000, so we will see a little increase anyways. But other than that, they, they basically kept their budget at a steady pace, they're very, very little increase, just basic numbers. They are continuing to work remotely for most of the part, so they are rethinking the remodel project they talked about doing for their third and fourth floor at their St. Paul office, because so many people are working remotely and are liking it, and it's working well, that they're wondering what they're going to do now with these two, extra two floors, and not, at this point, not willing to spend the money, even though they have money set aside, to do that remodeling, because they don't know what office is going to look like in the next couple of years. So I think everybody's doing that, and appreciate that. I know even discussion with the new city hall, we've been discussing that too, what is our office space going to look like in a couple of years? And it's good to see that discussion. Kelly Bouchard, do you have anything? Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, you should have your budget books, 2021 budget books were distributed to the city council this evening as required by our charter. And then, just for the audience, we have a school supply drive put on by our police department that will be occurring this Thursday, August 27th, from 3:00 to 7:00. It's a drive-through type event, and it'll be held at Mersham Hall. Everyone's welcome, the supplies are limited, but we do what we can to make sure everyone has what they need. So again, August 27th, Thursday, 3:00 to 7:00 at Mersham Hall, the school supply drive put on by the police department, that's all I have.
Are they taking donations for that too, or?
Um, I, yes, but I don't know, if you have any, we would need them soon, since it's just a couple of days from now.
On their posting, on their Facebook posting, it says they are taking donations for like diapers and hygiene products.
Yes, hygiene products, for SECA, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you. We have a city attorney here, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is an executive session. At this time, the item, the agenda item for this meeting is to discuss litigation in the matter of the complaint filed against the city of Columbia Heights by Jeffrey Behi and Robert Williams with regard to property at 675 37th Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights. This portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council of the city of Columbia Heights will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D, that 05 subdivision 3B, under the attorney-client privilege exception to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law to discuss litigation related to the complaint filed against the city of Columbia Heights by Jeffrey Behi and Robert Williams with regard to the property at 675 37th Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights. Okay, I missed it, I'm sorry. The city's need for absolute confidentiality outweighs the purposes served by the open meeting law in this case based on the following. Absolute confidentiality is necessary so that the city council and legal council can have a candid and open discussion to determine the available legal options to handle the pending litigation, including strategy and possible alternatives to litigation. The purpose of the closed meeting is not to make a decision behind closed doors, but instead is to determine the legal options for handling the reference pending litigation. The only business to be discussed in this portion of the meeting is the litigation. An open session would be detrimental because it may take place in the presence of individuals involved in the litigation. A closed session would benefit the public because the ultimate outcome of the litigation may impact the finances of the city. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
Move to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation related to the complaint filed against the city of Columbia Heights by Jeffrey Behi and Robert Williams with regard to the property of 675 37th Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D, period 05 subdivision 3B.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowinski, all in favor, excuse me, I need to do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Biskins?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember needs to abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Councilmember Mershen? Councilmember Nowinski?
Yes.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
Council will now go into a closed session, the time is 5:00, 7:49. Only the officials and consultants of the city who reasonably require access to this data may be in attendance at any point of the meeting for this agenda item. The meeting should not be taped or otherwise electronically recorded since it has been closed under the attorney-client privilege, see Section 13D, point 05 subdivision 1D. All closed meetings, except those closed as permitted by the attorney-client privilege, must be electronically recorded at the expense of the public body. The minutes of this portion of the meeting should reflect only that a meeting was held with its date, time, and location, who was present at the meeting, and purpose of the meeting, so we are...
Thank you. We're going to meet in the admin area, office area, so we can spread out.
Okay.